And how do you do, how do you do this? I just start turning. The rest of your body goes because you're not using anything. How long are you down?
David said he did the other day, he said, tell me if it's sweeping.
Absolutely, really.
All right, we're gonna call and order the Glades County Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting for Tuesday, February eleventh, two thousand twenty-five at nine a.m. We'll have the prayer by Commissioner Taylor and the pledge by Commissioner Patterson. Would everybody please rise?
Lord, we thank you for waking us up this morning and for the freedom to get out here together with God. Just pray that you would give us wisdom, more guidance, boldness, and discernment in, uh, to help us to lead and make the best decisions to benefit our county, and we just thank you for each one represented here in our families and Jesus, and amen.
Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So welcome everybody here this morning. Just for the record, Commissioner Sapp is out, absent, he's sick today, so he is excused. Uh, first things on the agenda, uh, administrative agenda, I have a request to call, um, item number nine, increasing mileage for reimbursement. You entertain the motion to?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I make the motion to, uh, we'll move on to number nine, the increase in mileage reimbursement rate to reflect current future IRS standards from the issue.
Thank you.
All right, the motion by Commissioner Patterson, seconded by Commissioner Taylor. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero. All right, public input on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to provide public comment, please fill out a comment card on the table at the entrance to the commission chambers. Please note, all comments on the non-agenda items are limited to three minutes and/or the board's discretion. Do we have any public comment? Anybody here have public comment that hasn't filled out a card? All right, we will move on. Uh, presidencies and awards, we have none. No public hearings. Our consent agenda, which is number one, federal equitable sharing fund, DOJ request. Number two, local law enforcement trust fund request. Number three, county warrants, and number four, improvements of the December twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting.
Mr. Chair, I make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Patterson, seconded by Commissioner Barnes. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Passes four zero. All right, public input on business agenda items. Anyone wishing to provide public comment on agenda item, please fill out a comment card on the table at the entrance to the commission chambers. Please note, all comments on agenda items are limited to three minutes or the board's discretion. We'll move into our business agenda, which is number five, discussion and direction on water storage facilities in Glades County. I guess this resolution is part number five.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So at the, uh, the last meeting, it was requested that we put this discussion item on the agenda regarding our, the county's position, or to determine the county's position on water storage, water farming, whatever the word of the day is. Uh, unfortunately, the draft, the resolution Mr. Pringle had done prior to me even getting here, didn't make it onto the agenda, but this was an outline, and it is a very rough draft of some, some key points that the council may, commission may want to consider. It's a, it's a pretty, pretty, uh, in detail, in detail resolution regarding not, that is not, uh, supportive of expansion of water farming and water storage in, in Glades County, and what affects those decisions that are on our county's tax roll and the economy in the county and being able to survive. We know that, um, since when I was here last, the water storage issues have been a major concern of the counties when they start taking land off the tax roll or reducing, uh, add-on tax value for properties within the county. We were in a meeting yesterday with Okeechobee, and we're talking about it, and just losing twenty thousand dollars is like losing an employee, and every, every time we lose some funding, we lose the ability to just manage ourselves, and it's becoming, you know, more and more prevalent. I think the, the question is, is what is the first step this commission would like to do? I think the resolution is a, is a pretty four-step out and could present some challenges in Tallahassee and some pushback from Tallahassee. I would like to suggest, and it's gonna be the commission's decision, is maybe we ask the chair, give permission for the chair to write a letter to our legislative delegation, and kind of outline the things that were talked about during that meeting on January eighth, you know, what we can do to offset those costs, to set aside and not just pillage with actual revenue dollars. We want to make sure that we're cognizant that we're, we're fighting a field battle, but we also don't want to create a political minefield for us that we have to, have to, uh, try to overcome. I think we can, in March, we can do a lot with our voices and with reasoning and plans that we've come up with. Um, like I said, this resolution has some pretty tough clauses in it that may be taken, you know, somewhat adversely from, from individuals, but, you know, I, I understand the, the plight of the county, I understand the challenges that it poses, these projects pose to the county, and I understand the commission's, uh, desire to put state on those, that you can't keep doing it, uh, and to the rural counties in general. And I think we can get a message across, and our delegation seemed open to even the fed tax funding and some of those things that we can work on to try to, to get our point across and avoid some political minefields that may, may not arise. But with that, I'll open it up to conversations, questions, thoughts, ideas, give me some direction on how you want me to move forward. Uh, Mr. Pringle's here as well, he's well-versed, and we've talked about this ad nauseam, so.
Well, I, I, I agree with you, the way it's written, it's, it's pretty, I mean, it's, it's almost where if a developer wanted to develop right now, he wouldn't be able to put any attention upon before his, think of this as no water storage period, so it would have to be changed, but I think it's, it's a, a really hard approach, and I think that we would be challenged in that this small of a county as we are. We could end up spending our whole budget fighting this in court of law, and in the end, when we run out of money, we're not gonna win anyway, so. I think trying to do some more discussion with Tallahassee, and also not just Tallahassee, maybe, maybe we need to address our water management, government board members with that letter also, and try to do a, a softer approach, and if that don't work, then we come back to the harder approach, but, um, I just don't see this coming off right now as a, um, something that we're gonna win as written.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
I agree with you. This is, this is pretty harsh, and I know it was written this way for, uh, bu- before with the, with the last county manager and the last, uh, last board that was here. And there, there's a lot of it I agree with, there's a lot of it I don't agree with in here, uh, I think we should take a look at it, but. One of the things that I'd really like to see is, you know, they, they just totally skip over us. They totally skip over the county. The county has no say-so in what they're doing, and I think that needs to be a part of it, that we need to speak to the delegation about. We should have some, we got skin in the game, but they're not even giving us a chance. They're just saying, well, you're gonna take it. And the other thing is, you know, going back to, uh, taxes and things like that. You know, I've, I've talked to a few people, and they say, well, if, if this happens, we'll make up the add-on because we're gonna do this project, this project, this project. On, on the project that's going on right now, which is, uh, I believe it's totally out of our hands at this point. You know, we're gonna lose right off the bat twenty-five thousand dollars a year, right off the bat. It would take a lot of projects, number a lot of years, to make up that twenty-five thousand dollars, you know, that you're getting in taxes, that you're getting in taxes back. So if you build a, a new house, you're not gonna pay twenty-five thousand dollars that first year taxes, you know, back to the county, it's, it's not gonna happen. So if it takes, let's say, ten years to get back to, oh, well, we, we've made up that twenty-five thousand dollars, and we're here ten years later, we've made up that twenty-five thousand dollars. Well, yeah, you made up that twenty-five thousand dollars ten years later, but we lost two hundred and fifty thousand. You know, and, and everyone wants more things. People want better ambulance, people want better fire service, people, you know, they keep asking for it. It's hard to give that to people when you have stuff coming, it's not coming off the tax roll by definition, it's still staying on there. But the taxes on these things get so far reduced that it basically is, you know, basically is coming. I, I think maybe it's something that we looked at, and, and Ms. Crook and I have discussed it before. Um, you know, water farming, it's not an agricultural enterprise, maybe it needs to be taxed in a commercial way. May- maybe that's how we need to approach it. But it needs to be something where the county is made whole when something like this happens.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
And I understand that premise, the fact is we're preempted by the state from being able to tax them at that, so that's why I think we talk to the state, if we talk to the state about how we get compensated based on the reduction in add-on and non-add-on taxes for that matter, because it's, we're helping the entire state, but the entire state's not helping us.
Exactly.
And so, you know, we're taking the discharge from the northern counties above us, and they're profiting, and the coast is profiting, and we're taking a blunt. And I think the message we need to say is, is, is what I've always said, if clean water and clean air is good for the, the state, and we're providing it, we should be compensated for it. And I think that's the message we need to bring back to Tallahassee, a form that I've been fighting for since I was here last time and before, it seems like we're gaining a little more traction. Seems like drawing them, we're a little more understanding of that plight, but putting those numbers in front of them to show them that when sixty-eight percent of the county falls into non-add-on tax rolls, and either through state ownership or tribal or army corps, it leaves you very little land to be able to function, to be able to function and be able to draw revenue to function. And, you know, we're limited on being able to raise that, or add-on taxes, we're limited on a lot of things. We start doing MSTUs for fire, that, you know, that's gonna be affected by agricultural properties, and, you know, it's just one thing after another that, you know, we need to be able to be self-sufficient. Don't, don't keep taking, keep taking food out of our mouth and tell us we just wanna die. The good diet's over.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I, I do agree. I know that some things are out of our hand as just a local governing body, but, uh, we can, I like the idea of the letter, and I am grateful for the opportunity next month to go to legislate the things and, um, just be the voice of the people, and, and for our county, I'm all for, uh, property rights, but this particular project affects so many other properties. It affects, you know, potentially just a huge part of the county, and so I don't think we are to go, this is like the commissioner chair said that this will prevent retention ponds, I think we may need some of those, so, um, I agree that it's best to continue to provide pushback against this project because it affects so many of our residents. And, uh, in, in all ways, in, in their personal homes, maybe in their yards, and in, or taxes for the, um, county to be able to provide services like you were speaking of, that we need. So that's another thing.
Are you out with input?
I agree as well. Seeing the trucks out there last week, this is a good little property that they're, they're starting to survey that already, so we'll have one big retention pond soon, but.
Well, in, in reality, I mean, most people in this county wanna keep this county natural like it is, and one way of keeping that is for these projects to come in and, and restore whatever. But as long as we're compensated for that, I don't think anybody has a complaint about it, but it's when they start taking the money away from us, that's when we complain, but, I mean, it's, yeah, it's like you say, we are providing a great service to the whole state of Florida by cleaning up this water, and, I mean, right now, they're, they're killing our Lake Okeechobee right in our own backyard, and, and they don't seem to care whether it's saved alive or not, but, um, I don't think the issue is that we're against water storage projects, I think that the issue is we're against not being compensated as, as what that value of that property could be in the future by taking it off, so. I think I do believe that that's the avenue we should take, and like they, if we can't get any results, I know I've talked to some of the governing board members of water management, and they are kind of coming around to that ideal that, yeah, maybe Glades County doesn't help because of, they're seeing the, the whole picture, and so just, you know, here's land that's, we're, we're about the only old Florida left, and, um, and it's one way of conserving it, it is by letting these projects come in here, but as long as we're being compensated for them, I think it's a win-win for us and everybody, but, um, it's just like where I'm living up there in Buckhead, I think if that was, instead of that community going in there, if we could make the same money off of a water project, then people would have much more rather have the water project than, uh, thirteen hundred homes, but, um, it's either we grow or we do something to keep our economy going up, and that's the way I feel.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, and I do agree with that, um, but we need to be sure the water projects don't affect, but some are doubtful about the burns.
Yeah, well, definitely it has to be safe for them.
Mr. Chair, for me, I, and I believe that could have been addressed in a plan in a zone meeting if it was ever brought to us. You know, uh, that, that is, that is one of the issues I have with these projects is you never hear about them after, you know, they say, oh, yeah, it's approved. What's approved? We, we knew nothing about it, you know. Uh, Likes Brothers was very upfront about what they were doing, they went to the, to the hunting area board and everything else, said, hey, this is what we're working on. And thank goodness they were that transparent. There's a lot of people that aren't that transparent. You know, there's some things I'd like to change about that, obviously, but, uh, like you just said, Commissioner Stanley is, you know, they're basically killing Lake Creek Tribe right in our backyard. This is the first year, um, that Lake Creek Tribe is not in the top one hundred of the best master lakes, the top one hundred best master lakes in, in, uh, in the country. Usually it's one, two, top five. Ten, twelve years ago, it started leaking down into the top ten and top fifteen, uh, when we, when we did the, uh, sports riders tournament, broadened down, it was, it was getting down to twenty and started to come back a little bit. This is the first year that it has not been in the top one hundred, and if, if we don't start taking that seriously as well, instead of just using it as a, as another water storage facility. And they sat right here in this meeting and said, there's too much phosphorus going into Lake Creek Tribe. Well, why can't we stop it from going in? Why are we gonna let it continue to go in? And come all the way down, we're gonna hold it southwest corner. That, that still does not solve the problem. It doesn't solve the problem at all. We need to, you know, go from, from up there. And, and, uh, you know, there's a, there's a whole lot of different organizations that are for the lake, against the lake, wha- whatever it is, but we've gotta realize that we've gotta make somewhat of a living off that lake as well, you know, through tourism and everything else. Guys, uh, growing up in, in Lakeport, and I know you and Buckhead Ridge, there used to be probably, you know, fifty, seventy, five hundred guides around Lake Creek Tribe, there's about five in, in our area. There's five. So we have not kept up with the pace that our tribe can has, Henry County and other things, as, as far as making those tourism dollars off of it. Uh, I think we need to look at that again, but when you, when you basically have, like I said, it, it's coming whether you like it or not, we have no say-so in the matter, we need to have somewhat some skin in the game. So they're asking us to keep up our same amount of bills and everything else, but taking money away from us, that's hard to do.
Well, I think the consensus is that we will go to Tallahassee and do what we can to make it. If there's some good points that were brought up here today, that's what we'll do.
Is it the consensus of the commission to draft a letter for both the water management governing board and also for our legislative delegation, kind of, excuse me, outlining the, um, concerns that we have, and I agree completely with Commissioner Patterson, we should have a seat at the table, not that we didn't, can deny it, but we ought to have a seat at the table to have at least conditions based on, somehow, I mean, property use, just like we do any other property use. Uh, that it, that we're showing how it's true to our residents, that it's not gonna negatively affect them, and have an opportunity to, for the board to have a say in that. Again, I don't think the states would allow us to deny them, but we ought to be able to at least have some sense of, I agree with Commissioner Patterson on that. And we'll put that in the letter, if that's a consensus of the board.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to number six, request approval of budget amendment twenty-four dash twenty-five dash thirteen, increasing the general fund budget planning and zoning department by thirty-seven thousand five hundred for the update to the comprehensive plan.
Good morning, I'm Sasha Morgan, planning instructor. Uh, at the last board meeting, you guys approved, um, uh, updates to the comp plan for planning and zoning. Um, at the time that that was done, the budget amendment was not prepared, and we don't have a budget, um, for that project, so this budget amendment is transferring thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars from reserve for contingency into the planning and zoning budget, um, for that project.
Just a formality, really.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve budget amendment twenty-four dash twenty-five dash thirteen, appropriating thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to the general fund budget from reserve for contingency.
I'd like to make Commissioner Patterson, seconded by Commissioner Barnes. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, roll call, sorry about that. We will do a roll call. Anyway, myself is yes. Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Passes four zero. All right, number seven, administrative law judge services contract, administrative matters, including code enforcement cases.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, code enforcement has always been a major topic of discussion with the commission, and the city of Moore Haven is one of the magistrate, we were currently using, we're currently using the local judge to do our code enforcement, um, provisions and hearings, and sometimes that gets delayed due to trials, which is understandable. But in this case, we'd like to partner up with the city of Moore Haven and utilize the magistrate administrative judge to allow us to expedite our code enforcement cases. And I, uh, Mr. Mooney has drafted the agreement that the city's gonna be using, and we'd like you to consider us joining with them and doing our code enforcement cases and, and a cost share with the city of Moore Haven. Just because of the scale of values, if we have one case, they have one case, we can split those costs versus, uh, us absorbing all of it or them absorbing all of it based on the number of cases.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may add a few words to that. This would be a contract with the state of Florida, uh, Department of Administrative Hearings Office. These are administrative law judges that have been approved and selected by, uh, the Department of Administrative Hearings Office of, uh, out of Tallahassee. So everybody's been, uh, reviewed and, and signed off on by DOWA. The contract is with, is with the state of Florida, and, um, Attorney Mooney approached me about the fact that, especially with Judge Lundey's retirement and, and everything, that it might be the time to consider this as an alternative. You still have other methods. You could technically still, uh, even ask the county judge, the new county judge, to hear cases, but the reality is with all the cases that the county judge has, um, that it's gonna be more and more difficult. So it's good, in my opinion, uh, to have this alternative in place. Uh, the, uh, administrative law judges, uh, can appear and, and would intend to appear by Zoom, so there would not be the travel cost for those costs, uh, involved, and so it would be essentially the hearing times and, uh, preparation times of the, of the administrative law judge prior to the hearings to understand the file and the con, the facts of the case. It's, I think, a, a, a good alternative for the county to consider, and especially, uh, at this time, so that it would also give some relief to the new county judge, uh, who has his hands full. So, um, there will be a budget impact, we don't know what that is at this moment, we do know what the hourly rate is, it's stated in, in section two of the agreement. It's a very, uh, good hourly rate for the administrative law judge functions. Uh, it's, yes.
One thing too is we can also get administrative costs attached to the code enforcement. If the person is found in violation of the code, what I've done in the past using the magistrate or administrative law judge in this case is they award administrative costs, which cover the costs of the judge, the code enforcement officer, the filing fees, and all of the time to investigate becomes an administrative cost, it's attached to the judgment if they're found in, in, uh, non-abliance of the code. So those costs can be recovered that way, even if it may have to go as a lien on the property, but it becomes a reacculable expense.
Yes, it is recoverable under your, especially with code enforcement. And, and the administrative law judge under the contract can hear other, um, administrative hearing type cases as well that have authority under state law. Um, but primarily, uh, code enforcement cases is, would be the cases that they could hear for us. And, and the rate is two hundred and seven dollars an hour, uh, that's the rate that they set October one of two thousand twenty-four, and that is set every year by DOWA. So, it's a reasonable alternative to have in place. And if the board says that you want to proceed, then, um, then it would be a motion to approve entering into the contract, and I think the contract will ultimately be with DOWA. I think we will have a contract similar to this one that's in the packet, is the one between, uh, the city of Moore Haven and DOWA. But I think we will have one directly with DOWA as well, based on our conversation with the president, and that's what we're talking about here. So, if that's what the board wants to do, that's what we're there.
So will we be joining the city of Moore Haven, or we could set a separate, completely separate deal?
Um, I believe it will be a completely separate agreement between us and DOWA, uh, between us and the state of Florida. But we would make sure to coordinate everything with the city of Moore Haven, so that, as an example. so that, as an example, we will both set our hearings, um, on the same day, at the same time, at the same location. So that the hearing officer, the administrative law judge, they can just, if they, and especially if they have to appear here, then they can just do it one right behind the other for cost savings. So we'll coordinate. The goal was to coordinate with the city of Moore Haven and make sure that we are working together so that, um, whoever they assign, because there's some need for the administrative law judge to also understand the community and the geographic area and has some, uh, some knowledge of that as well would be beneficial. So we're trying to make it as beneficial for the county and the city collectively, uh, and working together. Fully intended.
We definitely need to do something.
And I, I agree that, so, right now, we're kind of at the mercy of the judge's schedule. So if a code violation comes in and they can't get them on the docket for six months down the road, where this code violation set out there hanging forever. Whereas if we have this, I'm sure we can get them anytime they need them and make them come in and do what they need to do. So I'm, I'm all for having an outside eye on this issue. And then this is not, you don't have an elected official making the decision either. So, you know, the judge, somebody comes in and they got a violation. Yeah, he might possibly know that he can be a threat. Or somebody from the outside, they don't know anybody in the county, they're just going to do whatever they think is fair and just. So I'm not saying that the system we have is bad. It's just that I think this is a little bit more improved.
Mr. Chairman, you would try to typically set a certain day in the month, set all the hearings up so everybody can get all their information together. The administrative judge has a date to set aside and, you know, that, that can change. But if you can set it for a regular hearing date, you know how this is going to progress versus we have one today. Oh, we have one tomorrow. I'd rather be systematic and be consistent. And starting out with one day a month and having them on a consistent date would also help with, you know, planning and with cost, in my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, is, is, since they've rewritten, I guess, the, the tickets they're saying that code enforcement uses, that Judge Lundie had, had redone, I mean, is that going to be a problem with this new suicide agent?
Well, so those tickets were actually rewritten, um, several years ago. And, um, we've been using them, but the service of them is the part that I've had some discussion with Judge Lundie about more recently, to make sure that they were properly served. I will need to go back and look and make sure that we don't have any, uh, hiccups. I don't think we will. I think the date, time, and place of the hearing was information that we always have to insert. So I, I'm hoping that they will be usable. But in any event, um, I, I think it's still good to have this alternative method of hearing cases in place. Um, and then we can, we can, I can get all that squared up. That's a good point. I'll look at that.
Mr. Chairman, I move to enter into a contract with the State Division of Administrative Hearings, DOAH, to provide the services of DOH, DOAH administrative law judges, ALJs, on a contract services basis.
And motion by Mr. Taylor, secondly, Mr. Patterson. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? All right. Number eight, Indian Prairie Canal Boat Grant, Grant Application Draft was on.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, the grant application for the boat, Voting Improvement Grant opened up, uh, February, and it closes in April, April the eighth, I believe it is. In order to get funded, the more information that we can supply to the panel that reviews our applications, the better chance we have of being funded. We know that the Indian Prairie Boat Ramp isn't complete disrepair. It's just, it, it's a maintenance nightmare. Archie needs to go out there now and put more material down there because it doesn't let drop. So boats drop off the end and create trailer damage. So Stephen Dobbs, New Lions, has agreed to do a rough design of a double boat ramp in a parking lot. So two things that's going to help with, one is going to show that we're in the process of getting our permitting and getting our design, engineering design done. Those costs are, are recoverable, or we can use them as a match to our grant, which also helps us get, uh, points or points as part of a match. And it'll also help me consider to figure out overall costs, which is, they need a detailed breakdown of the cost of the project we're going to submit. So this is going to help us in order to put together a package that I believe could score well. Maybe we ought to take a, a lot of pictures and, and it's part of our application process. But I think getting this preliminary design, it won't be an engineering design, truckability design, but it'll be enough to get them, get the panel to understand the needs and that we're really serious about moving forward with this. We're not just kicking tires. But after, or approve the ten thousand dollars for the conceptual design for the Indian Prairie Boat Ramp, if you like.
I have talked to the game commission and, um, about this grant. And I, I mean, we have to fix the boat ramp regardless. I tried to, see if I can get it so that... I was hoping the South Florida Water Management or somebody else owned the ramp, but no, we own the ramp. So it's our baby. We got to fix it. But, um, but if we do, I mean, that's one thing that draws people to our county is our boat ramps that are fishing. And I think we should do the best we can. And I've got some pictures down there where that whole parking lot is just slats a little. This will also expand the, the, the parking area out. And we're also talking about putting in a, um, an airboat access on, at the very end on the marsh side. So, um, I think that, talking to the lady from, for FWC, with us being a small county and being on Lake Upertoby, we have a really good shot at getting this grant. And supposedly they've got, um, quite a bit of money in that fund. So if we can make something nice out of that area down there, I think it would be a great improvement for the county now and the future.
Mr. Chairman, can, can we use TDC funds on any of this?
I don't know if we can use TDC funds, but I think there is boat ramp money in the line item. And then for boat ramps, it comes, well, it comes from the fishing license. I don't know how much money is in there.
We don't get a lot, and we use a lot of those funds just out of war. Every time I turn around, when I was here last, Army Corps was sending us a notice of deficiencies. And, uh, we do have a budget amendment in it as part of this motion to move the ten thousand out of general fund. TDC, you're getting a little bit of a, if you were doing infrastructure, you might be able to use that. That was part of TDC's change back in the day. But to use it for design and for conceptual, I don't think that would be an allowable, uh, expenditure under the TDC guidelines.
Mr. Chairman, I made a motion. I forgot. Do you have, the person wants to speak. Mr. Locker, would you like to come up?
Sure. Sure.
Mistake your name and address for the record.
Billy Locker, one oh two B C nine Buckhead Ridge. How you doing, guys? Yeah, I came here just, just, uh, you know, see what was going on with the status of that. One thing I've heard here today is, you know, this, this whole business of a grant, the application, you know, whether or not FWC is going to let us, or let the county have this money for this ramp. You know, that kind of, um, talking, I, I know it's just political, you know, grants, that's how that goes. And I'm going, you know, that, that money, I'm sure it came from the public that FWC has. I mean, if I was talking to them, this business of, well, can we have this money? How do we justify this money? You know, I just, I just, I don't know. I, I can't get, I don't see a clear thinking on it. That money's not theirs. It should be, we're going to grant you this money. I mean, the idea that we have to apply for it, from a citizen's point of view, that, that irritates me. It's like, here's the paperwork. Here's what we're doing. We're paying, you know, we're, we're asking you to help us with it. All those people that are fishing there are paying, most of them are outstate, are paying, what, triple licenses? And then you got all the other people from Florida that do have to pay for the license. I'm advantaged there because everyone, I'm taking my license and, or I've earned it. But, so, you know, I just, that's, I just wanted to come here and get that thinking on the, on the table. You know, when you're talking to them, it shouldn't just sail through. It shouldn't be six months that, that maybe they're going to tie this thing up. That's, that's why I wanted to come here. I wanted to get that on the table. You know, that, that's, if I was talking to that person in charge of that money, that's probably what I would try to get that point across is, what's, what goods the fund, if, if, you know, are they going to turn it down? Are they going to say, no, we, we can't fix that ramp? Or, I, you know...
It, it's not that...
Really, they should be putting it before the fold. That's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Well, the money's there and it will be spent this year, but if we're in competition with other counties and other boat ramps, that's, that's where the competition is. It's not that they're not going to spend the money. They're going to give it to somebody, but it's basically whose needs it the most.
Don't quote me, but I sent you that article that I was, I received, I received all their news flash and all their, all the updates. And one of them actually was on what's happening in the state of Florida. Don't quote me on this, but was it nine point seven million they just got from the state of Florida? The, you know?
Yeah.
So, okay, we're in competition. It's like, oh, no, this ramp, this ramp has been long in the area prepared. So...
Like I said, I had to...
And I appreciate, I appreciate the effort of putting in, but, Chairman, I've been talking about this thing for a long time. It's already been, probably a year now. And he was good enough and the road parking has gone down. You know, we've worked, they've worked on pushing, they probably need it right now. As Mr. Carter pointed out, probably need to go down there and put another ten, twenty yards of shell rock in there right now. Because the lower it goes and more they try to push, the more powering up they do. I'd caution anybody to go there right now. They're just going to put their, they're just going to put their boat in. They're just going to drop off and they're going to be stuck there unless that shell rock holds up or it gets on in there. Hell, I, you know, I've guessed the lighting and all that's in there. The other thing I, I, I guess I'm coming here to kind of put some caution on is, don't make it too big. You know, I mean, they're like right now, the budget that Trump's working on, they're trying to say, well, let's do one big, beautiful bill. Well, they're looking at that. I don't know. Let's do it in chunks. I mean, if we get this too, if it gets too big, you know, the ramp gets lost if they turn it down. So I think you got to think on it in that way, if it can be done in a couple of phases. The parking park, I mean, is that FWC's purview? I mean, is that something Lake County could, I mean, right now, you could relieve that if you moved that guardrail some.
Yeah. Well, you've got the company in there doing the work. You might as well get it all done.
That's okay too. I understand.
Yeah, we can ask, we, when we ask, when we go in and apply for the grant, we can say we can do the stages and we can do it all at once. So...
I wanted to come here. You understand my caution.
Yeah.
To make this thing real big and the other guys that are putting in, they just want a ramp.
Yeah.
So, I don't know. I just wanted to come here and kind of put my two cents in on that. So I'm coming from, you know, from the private sector point of view, you know, contracting. And I understand, and all those nice things you want to do is good. I mean, it's probably, it's probably a good thing, especially for the airboaters. Because they're, they're getting limited where they go heading now. Anyway, just want to come and thank you guys for looking at it. And I'm actually here to speak for a lot of people that are, that use that ramp.
Thank you. And we've also got support of the Airboat Association, but some of it, we have, we'll get letters from all of those people to support this.
Mr. Chairman, right now, that's one of the busiest ramps and, you know, spec fits and everything else.
Only a few places that there's still grass in them.
Yes, yeah, definitely. So, um, you know, I'd really like to see us, uh, if we could, get out there and make sure that we get a little bit more material in there and kind of keep pushing that. The lake is dropping right now. Make sure we don't, uh, become responsible for somebody's drop actions.
Well, that might, uh, just do, that would be one, I mean, if you had a, I mean, I think people pretty much know that a caution sign blanked in there would, um, would probably help, you know. Most people, I think, understand that if they go down there now, they could fall off. Unless you had, you know, had a good bed of shell rock in there.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the proposal for ten thousand dollars for conceptual design of the boat ramp at Indian Prairie Canal.
So the budget amendment?
And the budget amendment?
And the budget amendment.
All right. Um, I wish by Mr. Patterson, secondly, Mr. Barnes, to approve the design and the budget amendments. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, this is a roll call. All right. We'll do a roll call vote. Anyway, myself is yes. Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
All right. We deleted number nine. We will allow constitutional officers, anything in the sheriff's department? All good?
Thank you, guys.
Cameron?
Happy.
Any other prosecutors? Senior county attorney?
No, sir.
County manager?
Just a couple of updates. Gold Connor Construction Projects moving forward. They're still anticipating a May fifth completion date for that. It will be open for the talent initiative. They will have space open for the dance. That's been a big question. It is going to, the bathrooms are the priority, get them open. So that's going to, that's going to, uh, be too bad. So that'll be good. Muse, the meeting with the broadband streamline there, they had a meeting with our community development director, um, Sony, trying to get a tower up there and get broadband into Muse, which has been a, a challenge, to say the least, for years. So we're looking forward to that. The applicant for the Muse, uh, landmine has put in a cop plan, request for a cop plan amendment and a request for zoning, but that'll be coming up in some hearings, doing that forward. Being transparent, letting the public know, you know, everybody's asking about it. So it is, they have actually submitted their application. So just be aware that those are going to be, pay attention, those meetings will be being held and they'll be advertised. So encourage everyone to make their presence known and have respectful conversations. The Skopin Craft seventy-four is ready to get their notice to proceed. Been meeting with Aime Engineering on that project and outlining that, that project. But they're ready to go forward with their notice to proceed. I know that was a conversation. When seventy-four going to get down, well, the project's ranked down because of cost, but if they're going to actually get started on it, we'll be putting in for the other segments of seventy-four in our Skopin Craft. I'll meet with Archie then on Wednesday, get those in place. Seven twenty-one with the tribe, working on that contract, get that project underway. Lake Drive West, we're working on the bid specs. I'm there with Aime on that, try to put in some full depth, uh, patching. And then to add the additional roads, we talked to DOT about adding the additional beach and those other roads as a bid offer for that project. So hopefully we get some relief up there in Buckhead under those programs. Lakefronts got their zoning, uh, site plan. It's going to, uh, be, be put in for, so they get a development order. Big Lake, I've had some great conversations with them and trying to get them to understand the county's concern over additional turn lanes in the future. And then we want to make sure that it's their responsibility, that project is going. We've got to talk about the sewer and water concerns, but that project, been had some, had some good conversations with them. And, um, that, the last... And, uh, the that, the last thing I wanted to talk a little bit about, was here, when I left, and the project for the hotel, did we wanna get that back out of market and sell it? I thought, at least one person that's interested in putting a restaurant in a, in, in a market in there, not a restaurant, a supermarket, but, uh, something on that side, is something we wanna consider putting back out to bid? And if so, we can put it on the agenda, where you all can give us direction. This is an opportunity, when we put it out to bid, that you'll be able to put conditions on the sale, under the statute, you can do that. And, uh, so that you get a, you can set timelines, you can set, uh, what you want for the five acres, you can sell it in two acre parcels, two and a half acre parcels. But I wanna know if you're interested, so I can put it on the agenda, so we can move forward, get it back on the tax roll. We've got a lot of land that's off the tax rolls, and we probably need to start looking at getting back on the tax rolls. In my opinion.
I, I'm, I'm interested, I didn't really have, had opportunities. I didn't really was, was interested in it, but yes. I'm all for it.
Well, we have tried, tried, tried almost give that land away, to get a hotel in here, and it's, it's never, we've had a couple of bites, but we've never set up on the way yet, but, um-
We spent a ton of money on a study and, you know-
I like to just put it back on the market. But if we're not going to get something that we really need, I mean, if it's just made out of a restaurant or something like that, I don't know, I mean, I think we should get fair market value for it, but if they're gonna build a grocery store, I would be willing to, or a hotel, I would be willing to lower the price to-
Well, we'll negotiate that once we get into the-
But, yeah, but it's just something they're making, we might as well put it, put it back on the rolls.
I think that's a great idea, and like you said, we can negotiate terms, once we determine what the uses that you wanna have on there. You can, you can give a priority to uses, and then we'll bring back proposals to you all, then you, we could work on negotiating funds and fees at that point. But, yeah, definitely, we can, we need some job creation there, um, and, and, and we can, we'll get some. To get it back on the tax rolls is always a, a positive. But that's all I have, unless you have other questions for me.
Do you weigh anything for the county manager? Sounds like you've been busy in the first one.
Well, um, that's probably an understatement, but I think-
We appreciate it. Alright, we'll move on to department heads, Archie, you're the man of the-
I have nothing.
So. I know we've had several complaints about the tower out there, Harney Pond, I know Paul's looked into that, or he either cleaned up, it's become a buzzard's roost of some sort, but, I mean, it's an easy dress. Um, you make anything for Archie? Just keep the five holes filled right here until we get something in there, that's all I can say.
See, we're gonna get some dirt in the boat ramp.
And the, and some shell rock to the boat ramp. I think Buckhead needs some rock, they're not one too.
They're, they're all getting there, we actually put softball sized rocks out, because the boats blow them out, so that's gonna be an onboard from now till, I don't know, you know, a couple of months. So, we'll address that, there's money's in there for that, I'll look at that this morning, so we'll go ahead and start the conversation through.
Mr. Shaw, do you have anything? Archie, anything else? Okay, Bailey? Anything from the EDC?
Um, they already know, I think I've mentioned it, but we're working with retail strategies to bring, um, retail business, like we're talking about, I've told them we're interested in a hotel, interested in a grocery store, so, yeah, that's not going to-
I think that's everybody. Move on to commissioners, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, I, um, do want to keep in front the business part. And we're still moving along on that, I know I spoke with Ms. Sue, and she said it's still out there, and you haven't forgotten about it, so, just, you already know, I'm not, I don't have to forget about it, because that's more opportunities than we have, and I know, we just, our county, there's growth on the horizon, and we have to continue to have hope. It's hard, sometimes you ride through town, and you see businesses closing, but we have property out there, so we need to get it ready. We need to get it prepared. For positive growth, and we, we went over the, um, the list of the last meeting, on, you know, things that would be allowed, so that's exciting, so let's just keep that rolling. And also, um, and I've spoken with Mr. Carl on, what is important to me in this county, also to prepare for growth, is our fire services, our emergency services. And so I know we're having that county priority meeting on the twenty-fourth, so I think there needs to be discussion there. There may be some plan, but we need to be, that needs to be a conversation, I believe, for our emergency services, because we, right now, I spend time out there, and, um, we have a great, a great group out there, and they, they do not complain to me at all, I just go observe, and I'm a question asker. So I haven't annoyed them yet with my question asking, I do with my family sometimes. But, um, I do appreciate them, and I, I know our county, and, and they, they need help in just about every area. And so we need to be able to take care of ourselves, I believe, with Mr. Carl and the forum thing, so we're getting there, it's gonna be a process, but we're getting there. So I believe that's it, I don't, um, have anything else, I just wanted to, oh, on the moratorium, um, or excuse me, the water storage, I know we had that conversation, but I did wanna make clear that, that I agree with our chair that we need projects like that, for the help of our county. Um, and Mr. Patterson said, I, I can't remember who it was, but it was like, I, I believe it was, um, Tony Whitten. I was educated on a lot, and he got up at the workshop, and spoke, I hadn't thought about things like that, I think Mr. Patterson has mentioned it as well, it's like, they flush their toilet, and that's, that's where it comes. And so, there has to be a better way, and we do need to be compensated for that. Um, but also, I wanna make sure that the residents that are near the water storage, because I wasn't convinced, and they couldn't really convince us that the burn would, there's seepage, and so just in the latter, to South Florida Water Management, just to express that concern, um, you know, for the residents, just that they can do everything possible to prevent, because they're way out there already, so, that's it, that's my comment.
Mr. Barnes?
I'm still working with Mr. S. Moore out in Turkey Creek, on the, the mine noise. Uh, he's been working with the chief of the department as well. I don't know who all has talked to the mine that past month, and says it's been better, so. Other than that, we got, uh, Phil Day this weekend. And if you're hungry after that, you go to Oren's on the first spaghetti.
Is that Saturday?
Saturday at five, yes, sir.
Got a couple of things, Mr. Chair, um, one, a few of us have talked about this before, and I was really pushing for this, uh, you know, a couple of years ago, when we reopened the American Legion, um, getting a veteran service officer, uh, for the county, I, I still think that's very important. I was looking through the, uh, National Association of Counties newsletter they sent out, and one of the things they said was that they had secured federal funding for accounting veteran service officer. And I'd really like to look into that, and see what maybe we can do, um, to get one coming this way, and not only that, and maybe to put it on the agenda for the next meeting, to go ahead and have a job description that we can start advertising for, for a service officer. That's one thing, um, uh, talking about the Sam Griffin Tower out there at Harney Pond, that one's near and dear to me, uh, Sam and my dad were best friends, and, um, one of the things out there was, there, there was a shadow box that got damaged in the storm. Uh, Commissioner Whitten, uh, has all the stuff that was there, and Ms. Griffin has come up and told me if they need more things. Uh, she has some more artifacts that we could get to put back in there, I'd really like to see that shadow box be rebuilt out there, maybe with, once we figure out how to work with buzzards, putting the, uh, the, uh, part of our cloth up underneath, that contractor might be able to, to finish that out for us. Mr. Morehouse over here, uh, by the river, has emailed me about three acres that the county owns right there behind Thatcher. I wanna know what it would need for it to be for sale. And then just, you know, you ride up and down twenty-seven as much as I do every day, and it, it's getting pretty junky at a lot of places. It's getting pretty junky, we got, uh, you know, just across the bridge, fifty-five gallon drums, and IBC totes, and plastic pallets just lined up on the side of the road, and, um, out there by, by the water plant, there's people stacking cars in there. Uh, just right there on, on Coffee Road, had a guy decided to put his own bridge in, just decided to do it. Luckily, we got that stopped, but he's still hauling a bunch of stuff in, and, um, it's gonna be really hard to entice a business to come in, when that's the main corridor coming in and out that looks this way. You know, our, 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 uh, personal hygiene, home hygiene, and, and basically, you know, they look at it and say, if people are living like this, why would I want my employees being here? So, code enforcement is very important to me, I, I think, and, and I hope we'll discuss it more on our, our workshop, but, um, I understand we're a complaint driven system, but we, we shouldn't just drop by with a blind eye on a lot of stuff, but when we see things, we need to make it happen. And go ahead and get in front of it before it becomes a bigger problem. Uh, the, the place out there by the water plant, neighbor across called me one day, and he said, man, they're starting to sell boats out here by the side of the road. I'm like, what, got a boat? He's like, no, they got like twelve. And then, a couple of weeks later, they got forty cars out there. And a couple of weeks later, they got tractors stacked up out there. Uh, it, it, it just, uh, it's not a good look for a county. It's not a good look, and people are moving up here from down south, there, there's some of their properties down there, they're buying ours at a reduced rate, you know, thank God for it. They're, they're on the tax rolls and everything else, but that doesn't mean that they can just come in and decide that they're gonna make us look like highly. I don't like that, it, it's not a good look for them. That's all I have.
I don't have, oh, I, I still have people living in a tent on Southern Street. Need to be evicted somehow or some way, but I know we're working on that, but it's, I get complaints every day on that. Um, I know the governor released his budget the other day, and I think it was like three percent less than last year, so I don't know how that's gonna affect us, but I can tell you, um, that the federal money being stopped, and people that are, like Wheels on Wheels, I had a couple up there trying to get on Wheels on Wheels the other day, and, um, they don't even know, they cut their budget. Uh, so when COVID came, they, they increased their budget, and then they came back and cut their budget back to nineteen, um, whatever the year was before COVID, they went back to that number, and then they didn't realize that inflation was like three times higher than what it was then, so the money that they got when they cut it back, won't even serve the people that were already on the list, so it was getting tough to get people on there, I think I finally got these people on, on there, but, um, I don't know, you know, some of these, um, when you shut down a whole apartment, and sometimes you don't realize what little people on the other end are, are getting swan around pretty hard on, on the end of that chain, but hopefully, I know there's a lot of waste of federal government, I have nothing against that, but, um, anything that's basically, um, these food banks and stuff like that, and we do have these boxes up there bucketed once a month, uh, that's federal money, and, um, I might have found this one, but I'm not sure, so, it's, uh, kinda tough what's going on, but hopefully, we can take care of our people, and maybe the county can step up and help these people that, that gets to the dollar back where they're not getting food, but. Other than that, um, I don't really have anything else, um, in fact, I might all be living in tents, they're like, it works out without, but, um, is there anything else? Do we have any more public comment or anything before we close? Yes, sir.
Uh, I forgot to mention, Eric, we, we did have a developer close on eight point six acre, eight point six acre parcel in Marina. They have, uh, they have, they have closed on the property, and we've had additional discussion with them, uh, about their conceptual plan, what they're gonna do in there. We should have these laid this month to kind of formalize that a little bit, but, but hopefully, we'll be able to get some kind of use out of that property that's been vacant for some period of time.
Do you know if, if they're looking at it as a commercial, or, or just a housing, or, or even?
Both.
Both?
Both.
Yeah, thank you. Any other issues that need to be addressed before we shut down? Saying our businesses are done, we are adjourned at ten o'clock.
No, but the sign is on the floor. If you come to the, that's on, and it's angry, so.
I figured I'd figure it out.